All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, April 30th. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 9. And will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. Ms. Weston, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the reorganization of the board.
Do we have a nomination for the chair?
I'll nominate John Carter.
Do we have a nomination? I hope we have a nomination and a second.
I accept.
You have to vote.
I think there has to be a vote. Are there any other nominations?
I should say, accept the nomination.
Are there any other nominations for chair? Hearing no other nominations, do we have a vote? Actually, I think we have to do a roll call since Jim is on Zoom. So this will be a roll call vote. Go ahead, Dan.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Jim, we need to do a roll call.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
There we go.
All right, I will turn the meeting over to the chair.
All right. Congratulations. Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Yes. I would make, I guess I'm open to a nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate Jim Hoffman for vice chair.
Second. Oh, what? Oh, are there any other nominations? Hearing none?
Mark Townsend says aye.
Roll call vote. John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Great. Congratulations, Mr. Hoffman.
Just want to say that everyone, as you can see, I'm kind of new to nominations in seconds and firsts, so it's been a long time since I've been a chairman of anything, so it's going to make some mistakes. All right. So I guess on the agenda, we had a 6:35 agenda item that now has been, I guess, canceled. Oh, another mistake. Well, as always, we'll start off with citizens' participation. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? No one's come to the mic. So, our next item on the agenda, I believe, has been removed, the 6:35 agenda. So now, I guess, we'll go into the 6:45 item, the approval of executive session minutes. Would anyone like to motion, make a motion to approve, to approve the executive session minutes of April 9, 2024, not for release?
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other issues, questions, or concerns? Nope. Hearing none? All those in favor? A roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay. John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for April 16th and April 22nd, 2024. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 16th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote.
John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye. And I'll make a move. And I'll move to approve the minutes of April 22nd, 2024 also.
I'll second that as well. A roll call vote?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
John Carter says aye. All right. Are there any select board announcements? I guess it's time for select board announcements. We'll start out with Mr. Ryan.
I want to thank everyone that came out to vote last Saturday. It was a hard-fought battle with Mark and Sarah. I actually didn't even see the total turnout. It would be probably good to get a, get a, you know, report on that. And also, I want to thank Ms. Praval. She put together, I don't know if you heard, there was a meeting with the Finance Committee last night that I attended, you know, as a, as a citizen, and, you know, so she put a lot of work in, she put a great, a lot of the information we've been looking for. She put a lot of effort in, you know, into that, and I'll thank her too during the, when she's here, for all the work that she did to get, help us to get the budget prepared.
Ms. Hewn?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who voted in our local election on Saturday. Your vote really does count. It was close, Mac. And I'd like for people to remember, Jane gives thanks, Food Pantry, as always.
Mr. Hoffman?
I also want to thank everybody that came out to vote, and I want to congratulate Mark and Sarah on their reelection, and thank them both for stepping up, for signing on for three more years. Appreciate that. And also, one quick reminder that May 11th is the Kane Strong Golf Outing, and we're still accepting raffle donations if anyone would like to donate. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
All right. Thank you. I also want to thank everyone that came out to vote and everyone that ran. It was a, I appreciate everyone that came out to vote. And, Mr. Chair, if you would, I have something else that I want to say, and it's a little longer than most of my select board announcements, so if you'll indulge me.
Go free.
I've had the honor of being chair of this board for the past three years, my entire second term. That's a long time. During that time, we've had multiple town administrators, we've handled a lot of difficult issues in this room, and many members of the public have reached out to me with a lot of different questions and concerns. Many of those questions were all things that never ever come up on select board agendas, but I think, in many cases, when people don't know where to go for something, they naturally reach out to the chair. I always did my best to get the, those people the answers or the information they were looking for. Most of the time, that meant that I had to turn to someone here at Town Hall for help. I wanted to take a minute to recognize a few of those people who have always been so helpful to me. They say that you should never mention individual names when you do something like this, because you're always going to forget somebody. Well, I want to apologize in advance to whoever I forget, but I do want to mention some names, because I think it's important for people to know about the extraordinary people that work here for the town, and how much I appreciate their help, and I want them to know that. First of all, all our public safety chiefs, Chiefs Weston, Dufulley, and Ryan have all been incredible sources of help and information, and whether it was King Richard's Fair, traffic plans, or some other issue, I spent an awful lot of time sitting with them in their offices, and I always appreciated their insight. I also spent a lot of time with Emergency Management Director Tom Walsh, especially during storms and power outages, dealing with Eversource, discussing whether or not to open shelters. Tom has an incredible amount of knowledge, and we're lucky to have him in that position. I can't begin to count how many questions I've had about roads or other issues that I've had to reach out to operations and maintenance about. Dave Cedenoff, John Woods, and Carrie Boss have always been able to get me the answers that I needed, really fast, and especially during the issues we had with Ward Street, and I appreciate that. Kevin Forg and Jill Martin have been great sources of information and help on a number of issues to me, especially all the questions that came up and the difficult meetings we had on North Carver Water. Our town planner, Tom Bott, has been really helpful on a number of things, especially when we had agenda items that involved different housing plans, and we're really lucky to have him here. We've had some really difficult meetings in this room, some difficult issues we've had to take care of. Lots of times, preparing for those meetings, we've had to make last-minute changes, often we've had to make last-minute changes. Shelby Roy and Nancy Hubbard have always been really helpful preparing for those meetings, and I appreciate all the help they've given me, especially dealing with those last-minute calls. And just finally, I want to take a minute to recognize our current interim town administrator, Elaine Weston. We've had three different town administrators since I've been here. Soon, we'll have our fourth. Elaine has been the bridge between all of them. She's been a steadying influence here from Town Hall. She's been a tremendous help to me, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. All right. I guess our next meeting is scheduled for May 7, 2024. I believe we'll be taking a brief recess and coming back at 7 o'clock for a meeting with the Finance Committee to go over the fiscal 2025 budget presentation. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I think, I think we should be in recess.
To recess. Motion to recess.
Okay. Do we need a motion to go into recess?
You don't need a motion, I don't think. You would just go to recess.
It's wacky. At 7 o'clock, we're going to continue our meeting.
Is the microphone? Yeah, that's fine.
Is mine on? Hello? Okay. Let's try this again. This will be the April 3 joint meeting of the, of the Carver Select Board and the Carver Finance Committee. Would the Finance Committee like to call the meeting to order?
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Carver Finance Committee, April 30th, 2024, at 7 o'clock.
Actually, Capital Outlay didn't have a meeting tonight. We just came.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
We don't have a meeting.
I thought you did, because you got a phone.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is, the only item on this agenda right now is the fiscal year 2025 budget presentation. As I said before, it's a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. We did have a meeting between Capital Outlay and the Finance Committee last night. I, what I would like to do is to have the Finance Director, there were a lot of questions, a lot of issues, a lot of concerns that were given to the Finance Director. My suggestion would be, we just let you do your presentation, to a certain point with all the changes, at least down to the split. And then, if we have any questions with regards to the rest of the budget, we can, I guess, address those separately. And then, Finance Committee obviously ask any questions that you would like once we, once we get down to the split, to make sure that all of your concerns have been answered, and then, I guess, the Select Board can then ask their questions, if that makes sense. Everyone agree? The floor is yours.
Thank you. So the goal of the FY '25 budget is to maintain the current level of service while maintaining qualified staff, as well as meeting the town's substantial capital needs in a way that does not duly burden taxpayers. One of the biggest budget drivers for FY '25 is the town's health insurance. The amount for FY '25 came in less than projected. This allowed us to mitigate reductions in the budget. Capital expenditures have been hit extremely hard by inflation over the last several years. The increased costs are taking their toll. The town will need to continue to prioritize the purchase of capital items that are important to the safety and welfare of the community. This past year, several significant projects have been completed. The Town Hall siding was replaced and the cupola was reinstalled. The HVAC at the library was also replaced. Painting of the library has begun, and the roof replacement and Town Hall roof replacement will be started soon. FY '25 is also a revaluation year for property. The Department of Revenue requires that all cities and towns revalue all property once every five years. I want to thank all the department heads for their hard work on this budget process. I want to thank our interim Finance Director, George Samia, our new Finance Director, Karen Praval, who came into Carver at a time when we had just transitioned to a new accounting software, and she did a lot of work to research our numbers and ensure we're getting accurate information out. I would like you to take note of the Select Board financial management policies. I had left, I know there's a bunch of papers in front of you, that is one of them that is in front of you. These were voted last November 15, 2022. In August of 2023, there was a working group that was put together to develop a budget plan and to agree upon a timeline process, as well as look at the financial policies and make suggested recommendations to the Select Board. As far as I'm aware, no suggested changes were put forth to the Select Board. There was also a Select Board meeting held on April 9, 2024. The financial management policies were put on that agenda. There were no votes taken to change the policies. We've had many discussions during Select Board and Finance Committee meetings, in which everyone is in agreement with a new town administrator coming on, a new Finance Director, that a new working group should be formed to determine if changes need to be made in the best interest of the town moving forward. Presented before you is a recommended fiscal year 2025 balanced budget. That is, as of today, 43024 for Carver. The process started in the fall, as we do every year, meeting with departments and going over the budgets. Those were then presented in January at a joint meeting with the Select Board and Finance Committee and Capital Outlay. The budget has been worked on by the town administrator and the interim Finance Director. Four weeks ago, myself and the new Finance Director adopted that. During this time, we have vetted salaries, balances, schedules, and provided backup documentation. We've also met again with department heads. The Finance Committee and Capital Outlay Committee met last night and made recommendations to the budget. These changes have been implemented into the budget before you. As we go through the budget, myself and the Finance Director, Karen, will answer your questions.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At the Finance Committee last night, there were a lot of questions that came up. Everyone should have received a spreadsheet that says FY '25 Finance Committee Questions. I've gone through the questions that have been asked and I've answered them, and then we can walk through the budget, and I can explain some of the changes that we've made within the budget, mainly around shared costs, which came up at the meeting last night. The questions that you have in front of you consist of questions that I've received from many people at the, that are members of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and last night, we noted that it would be shared with the entire committee so that we all understand the questions that have come up, so that can, so they can be answered. Some of the questions that you see within this document were not discussed last night, but there were questions that came up that I wanted everyone to have the backup information for. So, so I just start with one, and then, as we move on, it will then, you know, get into the shared costs and the adjustments that we made for the balanced budget that we're presenting to you tonight. So the first question that was presented was how much free cash was certified in FY ' '24 and appropriated, and how much free cash was certified for FY '25, and what is the recommendation to be appropriated? The town received $1,385,996 in FY '24, and it was appropriated, you know, as follows. I don't know if you want me to read all of them, because we have that, but the entire amount that was authorized and certified by the Department of Revenue was allocated to the budget in FY '24. In FY '25, the town received certified revenue from the Department of Revenue of $2,122,484. The recommendations of using the free cash for the FY '25 budget would cover unemployment reserves, $48,100. Putting money into stabilization fund, $100,000. Putting funds into debt stabilization fund of $100,000. Compensated absences, $99,300. The fire safety equipment revolving, $10,500. OPIB, $100,000. We, OPIB settlement was $48,579. Capital projects allocated, recommended, $1,210,000. And then, we have Finance Committee Reserve. A portion of the free cash will be funding that. As we moved those funds into the operating budget, they were originally part of a transfer.
Can I just clarify something? I can see the looks on people's faces. That is just the free cash appropriation. That is not the total budgeted amount.
Thank you. Thank you. That's correct. And these are just for questions that came up. The second question that came up, excuse me, the third question was, the pilot, the second question, the pilot fund, were there funds that were allocated to the pilot fund? The pilot fund has the same name as the middle school construction reserve, and when presenting the balanced budget as of 4/29/24, we originally allocated $50,000 to that line, and this is part of the shared, the shared cost budget. In FY '24, $225,310 was allocated to this fund, and that balance as of today remains the same with the 2/25/310 in it. The FY '25 adjusted budget as of tonight does not have anything allocated to that fund for this year, and we'll go through that as you look at the shared cost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know this is going to come up, and it might as well come up right now. You can't not put money in that account. It's a town meeting voted article that puts one-third of the pilot agreement money, which I believe is $1.3 million. Town meeting voted to put a third of that money in the high school, middle high school building fund. I don't know how we can not fund it, unless this is somewhere else on the paperwork that we actually did.
No, so as we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting and a previous Select Board meeting, the pilot allocations really need to be discussed, because we have around $1.3 million in pilot funds. Allocating a third into the different reserve funds that you request would not allow us to balance the budget, and it wouldn't, there would be major reductions in, you know, both the town and the school if you're taking, you know, $1.3 million out of the budget.
So we just ignore town meeting's vote? We don't care what they had to say?
So, so I think the question is, yes. We, we know that the financial policy said, took the pilot money, broke it down to those one-third categories. The only one that was mentioned, and I don't know the verbiage of that warrant article that year, was to specifically identify a portion to go to that fund. I just don't know what flexibility we have in that, because I don't believe in prior years we're fully funded one-third of the pilot to that fund.
Through you, Chair, and we can, we can look at that, and as we look at the shared costs, we can look at, and as part of the questions that I presented, the committee asked questions on the percent, the allocations for the school department, so I put various, I put together a few different scenarios for the committee so that you can, you know, for this look point, so that you can look at what that will look like if we were funding everything, you know, in terms of what would go to the school, and what changes would have to be made within the budget.
Okay.
But the pilot money was a third, and, and when, when Mr. Fennessy and I looked it up, and we looked at the minutes going all the way back to 2017, it was an article. For some reason, the other two funds did not get included in that warrant article.
Yep.
It was just the middle high school. And then, the way it was worded, there's some ambiguity as to whether it was a one year and we had to do it again the following year, or it was something in perpetuity. Because it, it didn't say that from here going forward forever. It, it was talking about putting one-third into the middle high school building fund out of the pilot programs. So did we not have to say within the verbiage that this is going to be the policy going forward in perpetuity? So that may be something we're going to have to look into.
So are you saying it was voted at last year's town meeting?
No, no. Like, 2017, '18, it was voted.
And this amount was put in every single year?
No.
Just that year.
So the question is, did it have to be a warrant article every year?
So, Mr. Chair?
It wasn't even done the first year, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just, I was just going to point out, if I may, Mr. Chair, that my understanding is this is a policy, and so if it was a warrant article for a particular year or two years, that it doesn't necessarily mean we have to do it every year. It's a policy that gives us flexibility. That's, that's my understanding.
So I'm hearing is this was a policy that was put as a warrant article in that particular year?
Well, it's been a policy, but then that particular year, they asked for the money to be put in such and such account, but not necessarily going forward. It's a policy that we'd like to do every year. That, that was my understanding when we set these policies up. Mr. Townsend might recall that, that it was set up as that, as a policy.
Okay. Let's move forward with identifying that issue.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. So what would happen if comes town meeting, somebody goes up and brings this up and says, oh, no, I remember that from 2019 or '18, and we're supposed to be putting money away for the, for the high school? And it hasn't been done every year? I know, but now we know about it. So, you know, I know we didn't know.
It's been a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I think it was in, in our policies, but then it was also a warrant article for one of the thirds.
Right, and I, my, I could be wrong, but I, my understanding was that that was for then, that was for that year, when we hope we could do that every year, as it's a policy, but it, I don't think it's, policy's not required if we need it for the, for the budget.
I think we need to, I just think, personally, I think we need to look into it, because I understand it's in the policies, but I, the way the, the old financial 10-year forecast used to be, was that it, that one was always on the forecast going out for 10 years. The other two weren't. So I'm just wondering if the intent of that warrant article was for that one to keep going on.
Yeah, I don't think it said that.
So if you can't go by intent on a warrant article, it has to be written into the vote. So if it wasn't voted to be put into the budget every single year in, in a vote, then...
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, just a, just a clarification for last year. So Article 3 last year specifically said one-third of solar pilot into the middle high school construction reserve, 2/25/310. So it was, it was listed as one-third solar pilot in the article that was voted on. So it seems to me it had been a, either it's a policy or something driving that, because they spelled it out as one-third solar pilot into the warrant when we voted on it last year.
Well, it is a policy, but it doesn't say, it's not a bylaw that says this is something we have to do every, that's my understanding.
Right, and, and as we've pointed out, the, the financial management policies in front of you do outline that. I think in one of the first few paragraphs, it does say, these are a guide and need to be flexible, and I think this is, again, important, moving forward to revisit these. And maybe you do want to change wording, maybe you do want to make some of these things a bylaw. And I think that's important to clarify the difference between them.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, my, my second question relative to that is, where is the pilot funds being noted in the revenue? So did that get into the levy limit? So it's called payment in lieu of taxes, so you have different ways of collecting money, receipts or taxes. So payment in lieu of taxes almost sounds like it wasn't part of the tax revenue, but how did it get absorbed and how is it getting included every year? Because this year, we're using a previous levy limit of $31,123,302 with a new growth of 414. So my question is, what's driving that new growth, and where is this in the pilot so that we actually can account for that and use it? Because the way we're doing it now, if it's actually in the levy limit, then all of the pilot money, 100%, is in that levy limit that we're using for operating costs, because, you know, we're, we're adding, we're adding that up to try to balance the budget. So it's either in there or it's not in there. So the $2.1 million that we were talking about, is that what we said, I think, earlier? A one, 1.3?
$3 million for, I think it was, 1.3 million.
1.3. So the 1.3, where is that in the, in the revenue? That's, that's one of my questions. I, I might need the assessors to ask to, to resolve that question, but how much of it is actually in the funds that we're using for the budget?
So it is in the funds. I think, again, this is something that needs to be revisited. I think, you know, this is something we did have discussions on internally throughout the year, but nothing was voted on to change the Select Board policies. And that's why I'm mentioning that, because I, I do agree with you that, that does have to slowly get taken out of the tax base. And if people, you know, working group to get together and figure out a way to do that so you're not taking $3 million out of the budget in one year, that's probably the best way to go about it. We do have these... We do have these contracts for, they're twenty-year contracts. So we have time. We don't have to take it all out this year. I think it would be good to get a working group together to determine the best way to do that.
Mr., Mr. Germaine, a question first.
While we continue on, I'm digging through the minutes of the state meeting.
Well, yeah, not, maybe more of a statement than a question. So I think we have a couple of issues here, and they don't, I think they conflict. I think the, as far as the select board financial policies, I think they need to be updated probably every year. And we need to, these are policies that need to change as the town changes. And, and that's the reason for the last statement that says we need to be flexible in those policies. But then when we get back to the, 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 the school fund, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know. I think if there was a warrant article, it was probably prior to my being on the board. But if there's a warrant article that says we have to allocate a third every year, then there's a warrant article that says we have to allocate a third every year.
I don't think it said every year.
And I, I, I don't know that answer. I just think we need to, we need to research that, that to find out. Because if, if there is, there is, then we have to deal with it. So I think we need to find that out. That's, that's all.
Okay. So, so what I believe has happened, and that the solar money has been absorbed into the levy, I believe when the last negotiation happened with the solar agreements, it was then determined that any future solar agreements would now stay in local receipts. I think sent copter or whatever, that last, last one that we started, the rest are in the levy. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't be used in the methodology that, that the financial policies recommended. What we used to do would be showing it, showing it in as revenue, but then taking out through deductions. And that's when that number started to fluctuate. Was it one-third every single, in every single bucket? I don't believe it was. I think it was whatever the town could afford that year to put it, put it aside. So, so for the sake of discussion here, I think we need to resolve if this is, if it's in a warrant for that particular year, then yes, it had to be done. If it's not in the warrant, but it's a guideline, then it probably wasn't done. So right now, with all of our warrants, they're, they're basically been submitted. If we wanted to put it as warrant article now, we couldn't because it's, it's past that deadline. So I think we have to look at it right now as an allocation of the pilot programs as stated in this, in this recommendation. I think we definitely need to look at it because I'd like to see those numbers really, really do some, use what they were intended to be, which, which is a larger piece going towards, you know, non-operating reserves. All right? So I guess let's agree that it needs to get looked at, and you want to continue with your presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving on to question three. Let's see. Could you update the shared cost allocation to include ten thousand for the grant program and a hundred and seventy thousand for the finance committee reserve in the operating budget? So the budget, within the shared budget, has been updated. It now includes the ten thousand for the grant program that we discussed yesterday, and we also increased the finance committee reserve expense budget to a hundred and seventy-five. And you'll see that within your document under the finance committee. There were questions that I had in terms of understanding if this was a reserve or should be part of the operating budget. And it was confirmed yesterday that this is part of the operating budget to cover any unforeseen, you know, increases or deficits that may need transfers at the end of the fiscal year and at the end of the year. Whatever is not spent will then be, will roll back into the free cash for the town. So that has been added to your operating budget yesterday. I thought it was a revolving fund, but that, excuse me, reserve fund, but I was corrected. And so that has been updated, and you'll see that reflection in the budget.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So my only question with that is when you made that change for the, the one seventy-five and the ten thousand going above the line, did it then change the amount that was allocated to the town and to the school for their amount they got? Or did you hit like a reserve fund for that?
No, it, it, it did change. It did, it did change the budget, and we had to make adjustments. And I have a sheet on the shared cost that we can go over. I was thinking maybe we can go through the questions and then go back to the shared sheet so you can see how we were able to balance the budget to include the hundred and seventy-five along with the ten thousand for the grant without changing any of the other numbers within the budget. So I can go through that.
So I just don't have the sheet from last night, so I didn't know if, you know, thirty, seventy split totals had changed or not.
Oh, I, I, I have that sheet. So within your packet, on the second page, you'll see a sheet that says school budget, FY twenty-five projections. The first column was a balance budget that we, it's part of the handout.
Okay.
And the first column was a balance budget that we submitted yesterday. And the second column, we can go through it as we get to that.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
You're welcome. The fourth question is why and who decided for the town to use free cash to pay debt service payments for the fire trucks? Why isn't the town using other funds to cover these costs? Over the past eight months for the town, the town of Carver had a consultant that suggested using free cash to cover debt services for the fire vehicles. I contacted Hilltop Securities to confirm that, to confirm the town's outstanding debt service payments. The current debt service payments cover principal and interest payments for FY twenty-five and have been included in the debt service in the operating budget. So for the general fund, the debt service payments consist of the exempt debt service in the amount of one thousand one ninety-three, fifty, and tax-supported debt service in the amount of one million five oh-two, seven seventy-five. The FY twenty-five balance budget has been updated to have the debt service payments covered through the levy and not supported through free cash as it was stated yesterday. I've included a copy of the FY twenty-five projected principal and interest payment schedule sheet that I have from Hilltop, and that's been included in the packet of the questions and the backup for this.
Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Ryan?
So on the updated shared cost sheet that we had, it's still showing the non-excluded debt is one point three million instead of one point five. So we typically included the debt amount, the full debt service for the shared cost in the past. So it's looking like the update I have only has the one from last night, the one point three, not the updated one dot five.
Oh, you're, okay.
I'm correct.
That was an oversight. I'll have to update that.
Okay. So on that page in tab three where it says not excluded debt, that should be one point five million, one five oh-two, seven seven-five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Two thousand twenty meeting minutes. It's Article Seven, Creation of a Stabilization Fund for the New Middle High School Building. See if the town will vote to establish and dedicate a source of revenue for the New Middle High School Capital Stabilization Fund as follows or take any other action thereto. Number one, to see if the town will vote to establish the fund in accordance with MGL chapter forty, section five B. See if the town will vote to accept the fourth paragraph of MGL. And to see if the town will vote to dedicate thirty-three and one-third percent of the revenue from solar funds to the New Middle High School Capitalization Stabilization Fund established under MGL, chapter forty, section five B, effective for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, beginning on July first, two thousand twenty. And it was voted unanimously.
Which article was that? For which year, please?
Article seven.
Okay.
And it was a two-thirds vote.
It didn't say and. It did say and.
Did say.
It does say.
Did say going forward.
So the words are, see if they'll do it, section five B, effective for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, beginning on July one, two thousand twenty.
And it says and after.
And what?
Isn't that what it says?
Yes. To be effective for July, that's right, one, two thousand twenty, and, I think it goes and to number three.
Okay.
That would be the and. So to see if the town will vote. So it's very possible that the wording in this thing only established it for two thousand twenty-one.
That's what I think it was, but...
But it specifies thirty-three and a third, and I think that's where everybody got the third, the one-third number.
And, and if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And that's what the policy suggests too, that it be a third, another, and a third. But I don't think it says it has to be every year. Apparently for that particular year, that's what folks wanted.
It certainly doesn't say in perpetuity. Fincom voted ten to nothing, and select board voted five-zero on the warrant.
But not in perpetuity.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah.
So I would have council look over Article Seven.
It could have been a priority at that particular year that we wanted to make sure they wanted to sign off.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's right. All right.
I'm sorry.
So that's fine. I, I still think that we, that we really need to, maybe at the last item, revisit the pilot programs again to make sure we know what's going into each bucket. Sorry. Townsend, a question?
And that was the only article that Bob and I could find. That's why, that's the only thing we hunted down and located.
This, this may help you out too. In the past, we have not included the overlay as a shared operating cost for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. What I think they did in the past practice is that you take the amount of revenue coming in, because it's tax revenue coming in. So the overlay is to have as a, you know, set aside just in case you don't collect taxes. So what they've done in the past is they just net that off, the total revenue part, not a shared cost. So the two fifty was not in the past included, I mean, when they did this the last couple of years. So that two fifty potentially should come out. I don't know if that helps you in the, in the part that you're trying to do, but it still shifts, you still need to come up with the money.
Thank you for you, Mr. Chair. In response to your comment, Mr. Ryan, that's absolutely true. The allowance for abatement, which is also called the overlay, in the past has been a net amount out of the tax levy. It's usually in our accounting function that's done. That will allow us to continue with the same budget that we have, knowing that we are updating the...
Shared cost.
The shared cost with the non-excluded debt because that non-excluded debt figure was separated based off of a decision made to include funding into free cash. So we shouldn't have any problems. We'll have to update these, I'll have to update the budget to give to everybody, but we should still have a balanced budget. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I have a question on four, but I'll hold it till the end of your, your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're on five.
In five, what was the shared split percent in FY twenty-four? That was the next question. The shared cost percent that determined the school budget was sixty-seven point eight percent. A shared cost analysis spreadsheet has been included in this document where I've included various scenarios. People would like to turn to that. We can, I can walk you through the changes that were made and what was discussed, and I, and I can just explain this document.
Which page was that handout?
This is on the second page of the handout that I provided, and it's color-coded. So there's a column. It says school budget, FY twenty-five projections. And you'll see the first column is in white, it says balance budget, and this is new budgeted balance budget. Do you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So when we met with the finance committee and originally presented our balance budget, the finance committee reserve fund in what I've, I'm looking in the first column where it says balance budget, it was at eighty-three thousand, one hundred. And the school split was at the sixty-eight point four percent, which was a percent that had been used in conjunction with the consultant that worked for the town and prior to my coming into this position. If you look at the second column, new budgeted, new balance budget, it's still using the sixty-eight point four percent split. And if you look in the total shared operating cost, I need to update that, you'll see a hundred and seventy-five thousand under the FinCom reserve fund, which is in the operating budget, and you'll see the grant program for the ten thousand. We reduced the unemployment to forty-eight-one in order to balance budget. And the reason why the forty-eight-one was decreased from the hundred thousand is that as I was going through the FY twenty-three, end of the year's soft write reports, there were, there was fifty-four thousand dollars remaining in a prior, a prior year balance that we'll be able to use because that is set up in a reserve fund and not out of the operating budget. If you go to the blue column, the blue column represents, if we kept, oh, and then the, and then with, excuse me, I'm going back to the new balance budget in order to keep the budget balanced, we then removed the fifty thousand from the middle school capital reserve, which was formerly the pilot. If you look in the blue column, that represents sixty-eight point four percent. And I wanted to show, you know, with the different scenarios in terms of what you use in the allocation, what the effect would be to the school budget. So if you see within that column, we have the hundred and seventy-five thousand, we have the ten thousand for the grant program, we have everything funded based off of what we were originally submitted in our original balance budget. And with that, you would be looking at a sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred decrease in the school budget. So the school budget would have gone from twenty-four thousand to forty-seven, two fifty, to twenty-four thousand, one seventy-seven, five fifty. And you can see all of the amounts that are allocated. The next column is for, it was showing what it would look like if we used the previous allocation of sixty-seven point eight percent. And what I've done there is that you have the same amount of your total shared operating cost at the, well, for this one, you have, let's see what's changed. The old copy of these actually should be at eighty-one thousand. That was the original amount, but we changed that. But looking at that, you see a decrease of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two seventy-five. It would be a little less due to that, the copy is actually being changed to eighty-one thousand. And the next column, there were conversations in terms of the health insurance, not having the health insurance is part of the shared cost. So I showed what it would look like if the health insurance was not part of the shared cost, using the sixty-seven point eight percent, and you would be looking at an increase to the school budget of three million, three nine days, sixty-nine. And then the next column, I have a percent that should say sixty-seven point eight. My apologies. And it just shows if the health insurance were included, what that increase would be. Oh, I'm sorry. The sixty-nine point seven percent was in the financial management policy. So I put, so I...
From two thousand eighty-two.
So what I did was I wanted to show what it would look like had we, you know, had the allocation, you know, based off of the policies, which was the sixty-nine point seven. And with that, you look at an increase to the school of three, eighty-four, one seventy. And then if the health insurance was not included, you're looking at an increase of four million, one sixty-four, five sixty-six, with the understanding that, that health insurance would have been, would make the operating budget.
Any questions?
Well, there's lots, but you know, Friday's the third, so none of this discussion is going to help us tonight because there's nothing we can do about any of it.
Can I just ask one question? Just one. We still don't know how we got to the sixty-eight point four percent. Is there an explanation?
There is an explanation to that other than that there was a consultant, and I don't know what collaborative effort they had with other people within the town that came up with this percent, but I don't have any answer of how that percent came up.
So do we feel comfortable using a percentage? We don't know where it came from?
Well, we don't have a choice.
I'd go back to last year.
Okay, well, we got three days to do it, so.
I'm, I'm just...
How do you want to pull that off?
I'll just go back to last year.
At this particular, go ahead.
No.
At this particular point in time, oh, sorry. Mr. Mahal, you have a question?
Good, thank you. Well, now, just maybe a, a comment or two, maybe a question. I don't know. This, we've been talking about the split for a while. And I'm an advocate for the split. I really am. And as I've said in a couple of meetings, the biggest advantage of having the split is it eliminates floor fights. And I think that's important. But the split has to be done effectively and knowledgeably. And to Beth's point, that was one of the things I was going to say, is how did it get And to Beth's point, that was one of the things I was going to say, is how did it get to be, it used to be 70/30. They're going to go back, you know, 30 years, you know, and it worked, and it works well. And I don't see any reason that it can't change from year to year slightly. There shouldn't be big swings, depending on what you do and what's above the line, what's below the line, and so forth. But what is the rationale for getting to 68.4? And as Beth said, that, I don't know the answer to that one, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that one, and who calculates it and why? And one of the things we talked about last night, and one of the things that I said last night, was there should be some kind of a group of knowledgeable people that gets together, and particularly with the new town administrator and the new finance director, and straighten some of these things out. And again, it doesn't have to be the same every year, in fact, it should not be the same every year. But why, what's the rationale for getting there, and who does it?
I think, just to answer.
Mr. Ryan?
I think the 70/30 was around before the shared cost came in, so what probably happened is...
Oh, way back.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you is that it's...
When deregionalization came.
Right.
It was 70/30, that was 1993, yeah.
Correct, it's good to have a number for planning because everybody has to know what they're working with when they do their budgets. I think that whole shared cost, which we've all talked about, kind of threw things for a loop because that changed the whole dynamics of the percentage.
But that's recent.
But nobody knows what the rationale is or what that new percentage was, and then it seems to have moved since then. That's the situation we're in, it's shifting again back, and, but we, maybe as you're saying, a working group should undo the shared cost for the most part, go back to whatever that equitable amount is and go from there.
Undo it and recreate it, but do it with some kind of rationale.
And document that.
And, and knowledge about, you know, what's going on here.
Right.
But getting back to Beth's point was that, you know, again, essentially the 67.8 to 68.4 moved $200,000 out of the town budget into the school side of the budget without, with no really rationale. So, and going back to what Pat was saying, years ago, we used to say for every dollar of tax money and state money, 30 cents went to the town, 70 cents went to the school. Now we're going to be saying, we've got a dollar, where did it go? Now we've got shared cost, and we've got this, and we've got reserves and everything else. We can't go to a taxpayer and say, your dollar went here. So we need to get back to more of a simplified model that's accurate. What I see here is three, if I'm correct, last year, $3.4 million that really was a health cost assigned to the school that would effectively change the split from last year, it still would have been funded, but it just would have been shown as a school cost first, and the town would have had their piece. So I'm all for forming a group and saying, we need to, we need to make this clear, that we understand where these numbers are coming from, sorry.
So, to answer the question of the 68.4%, as I stated in the beginning, we inherited this. We have the last budget draft that was given to us, and this is the split that was given to us. So whatever led up to that, we are unaware of the conversations or anything that happened to lead up to that. We took that budget and vetted it, and are presenting it as a balanced budget.
And, Mr. Jim?
And there, I'm sorry, and there have been no votes, we did have a meeting of the Select Board with the financial management policies, and no votes were taken on that. So we still move forward with this percentage.
Mr. Ryan?
I think what we're going to need to do is to start back with last year's and the previous year's budget. Because last year's where, is where it went off the rails. When the shared costs, when the health insurance got put above the line, and the retirement got put above the line, and everybody was so happy. You know, we go back, and it was 70/30, it was 70.1 something, but it was. And then the school gave up the field maintenance or something like that, and that came over on the town side, and that broke the split down to the magic 69% to 31%, so it got under that 70% number. And that's where it pretty much sat. And then it got down lower than that when we stuck the healthcare and so forth above the line. Then the split really dropped, but it really didn't drop, it just looked like it dropped.
It was 67.8 last year because you, so the town, the school last year was $22,500,000, and the town was $11,051,000. If you add those and take it, it's 67.8 is what it turns out to be, so that's what they used.
So I think we're on the same page here from the standpoint of, I guess I just want to, as we go forward with this, we don't have a rationale between the 67.8 and the 68.4. It was done by the consultants, I get it, I understand. I think that going forward, we need to, and I know I keep saying going, going back in the past. As we go forward, I'd like to map out what happened in the past few years, so we know what moved and where, and then use that as a basis going forward. Right now, we've got $200,000 that is, again, being shifted from the town to the school budget based on this percentage. I think as we go through this, my suggestion is we leave it alone until we find something, if we do, that is a cost that the town is incurring, that we should be, that should be, some of this should be reallocated to cover those costs. Sorry.
One more thing related to this through you. The other piece we're not talking about is, we changed this percentage, but we also took out of the school budget after this was set, the IT cost. We took out a school resource officers, you know, overtime cost, so there've been other costs that were in there that we've now put above the line, but we still have the same exact split that we don't know where it came from.
And again, I don't want to repeat myself, but there was a working group that was put together this year to address that, and no, nothing was brought before the board to vote on, to guide that.
Did you want to speak?
I was going to say, there was a working group that was put together, that was, that was, kind of fell apart, it never finished. It just, exactly, it fizzled, and that shouldn't have happened, I mean, it should have kept going, but for, for whatever reasons, it kind of fizzled, and that's why we're here where we are today.
So I do, you know, want to just point out, you do have a balanced budget before you. I completely understand where everyone is coming from, it is 100% understandable. You know, we, we took what we had and created a balanced budget with that. There are clearly things that need to be fixed, I don't know that you're going to fix them before this town meeting, but I can assure you this is a balanced budget that the town can work with.
Well, I'm not sure it's balanced because we have to reconcile the, that $200,000 increase in the debt has to come from somewhere.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be able to reconcile that 250, the overlay, and some of the money will be reallocated most likely to unemployment because we do have those expenses that are coming through, but you'll see that, so it shouldn't affect the bottom line number.
But we still don't know what the pilot money is. Where's that $1.3 million? It's not in anything that we have, am I correct or incorrect?
That would be $409,723.
Sorry?
For, the pilot money third would be $409,723 if we did the third, but you're right, I don't know where the pilot money is in all of this.
The overall, because I know that this year, it's like $1.3 million, and it's pilot money. We haven't even got into discussing why there's an $80,000 credit on the library's light bill. That's something for another whole day.
Yes, it is.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So I, my understanding was that some of that pilot money was being used to balance the budget, is that, am I incorrect?
Oh, oops, through you, I pressed me, through you, Mr. Chair. The revenues for the pilot program, we have 16 pilot programs. We've been estimating revenue in FY25 of $1,322,372. These are reported within the town's tax levy by the Department of Revenue. And most of the, and these are things that have to be reviewed. This has already been submitted to the Department of Revenue. As you are reporting your revenue, your local receipts, there is a section for payment in lieu of taxes, which is usually under local receipts. So there's a lot of review that I need to look into in terms of, you know, how it's reported, but I can only go on what was reported to the Department of Revenue, but this is where that was allocated.
Thank you.
And if I could just address to Mr. Jermaine, the answer to your question is, it's sitting in the levy. We don't want to hear it, but it is. But that doesn't mean, as we go forward and we have our firm financial policies, that we can't decide on amount that we'll be now taking out, whether it's probably going to be gradual to get back to where it needs to be. But we need to honor that pilot program in whatever condition it is.
Yeah, because that was the one place we didn't want, that was the one place, everybody agreed that never put the money was in the levy. And where did it go? In the levy.
I will say it's in the levy, but again, that's a, from a geography standpoint, on the P and L, that's where it's sitting. But it doesn't mean that we can't use it for the purposes of the financial policies going forward.
Is it just in the P and L geography, or do we actually send it to the Department of Revenue like that?
Within the Department of Revenue, how it was allocated, so as you're submitting your tax recap, and I can, I can provide everybody a little copy of the tax recap of what was submitted to DOR, it is included in that. And I definitely had a conversation with our assessor, so I think, you know, after this meeting, we can definitely set up a meeting with our assessor and myself, and we can go through that. And as I start looking at, I'm working with, you know, the CPA firm that has been working with the town, working with DOR, and making sure that all of the revenue is allocated, you know, into the proper section, but we can have another meeting to discuss that. And I think he should definitely be present, because as we met, this was probably maybe my second, we had a discussion about the pilot revenue. Trying to understand, and I was trying to understand, you know, where is this revenue? And it's usually allocated in local receipts, he definitely had an explanation, but that's something that we definitely can work with the Department of Revenue and just get a better understanding of where that is.
Mr. Ryan?
One thing we could think about is that any new pilot money, which would be this year too, I don't know how much that is. We should probably find out how much the new pilot money is actually in there. Maybe the policy is that any new money going forward does not get absorbed into the budget. We may have to use free cash this year to balance it, but at least we're sending a message that you're taking all that pilot money and you're putting it where it goes. You start this year with that and maybe offset it with the free cash, so at least we now have a path forward to do with the pilot money.
Yes, all of the, all of the, any pilot money, any deals going forward for solar, any renegotiated pilot agreements, state specifically, it does not go in the levy, it goes in the local receipts. I've seen the schedule, and I think that that newest one had about $98,000 was an estimate for the first piece that would not be included in the levy. I got that from the assessor. So to your point, yes, going forward, they don't go in, it doesn't, it doesn't go in the levy per the contract.
Right, do you know, I guess my question was of the new growth this year, that's showing here, is any of that include pilot money on the new growth estimate? That's what I'd like to ask the assessors, what percentage of the new growth is actually, is actually pilot money?
If I could just stop for a quick second, Jim, you've been pretty quiet, do you have any questions? Uh-oh. We can't hear you, Jim.
Must be on mute. No audio, Jim.
No audio, are you on mute?
Yeah, we're on mute.
Do you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go. Any questions, any more opinions?
No, I'm just, no, a lot of my questions are already going to ask.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just wanted to answer your question, Mr. Ryan. So as for, in terms of the tax levy, we, the tax levy is set by DOR, it includes the prior tax levy, 2.5% increase, any new growth, and then whatever you have for your debt exclusion. This is more of accounting practice, because as money comes in, we know that we're going to be receiving in FY25, $1.3 million from the 16 different companies that have, that will be paying us. That money, as it comes into the town, should be put into a particular revenue account for payment in lieu of taxes. That way we can see where the actual revenues come. So I just wanted to make it clear that it's not that we're increasing the tax levy, it's just an allocation of when the revenue comes into the town, where that revenue is allocated in a particular account code. So that's something that, you know, I'll be reviewing. And as if everything is going into one account code, when we submit information to the Department of Revenue, to the tax, you know, for the tax recap, we have to provide the financial report showing where that revenue is going. So I think this is more of accounting exercise to separate these two sources of funding. As the chair was mentioning, we can definitely have a conversation about this with the assessor going forward.
Okay.
Okay. Just one quick question of that, if that becomes part of the tax levy, then the 2.5 is also added on to that, so...
Exactly.
That's not, that's not right.
No, because if that falls off, as soon as that ends...
That's the whole problem.
That's where you drop off, you drop off the cliff.
Yeah, so that's, that's...
That was the whole reason we didn't, because it sunset.
Exactly.
But I believe a question for the assessor is, is that the town's choice? Meaning, could, in the very beginning of time when we started with the solar agreements, did we have the option to make sure that it stayed out of the levy and didn't grow at 2.5, or was that DOR requirement?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think the question to the assessor is going to be, is the new growth figure include the pilots? Because the tax levy, the tax levy going back in previous years, I do not believe includes, it includes the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, because they're usually separate. But that's something that I'll have to look into, I can't, I don't have the answer to that, but I have to look into it.
And just last year, what they did is they, they took a new growth number of $350,000, but they also added an item called $170,000 solar new growth. So that was in last year's calculation of the total tax revenue of $31,779, included $170,000 of solar new growth.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think that in terms of the tax, in terms of what's reported to DOR, what's certified, we need to have a conversation, and we can have a working conversation with the assessor and with the Department of Revenue to get a better clarification on how these things should be reported.
Okay.
And I will make sure that I follow through, give an update to the committee.
So, just to recap, just so, I'm going to put pilot to bed, meaning that it's in the levy, it's growing at 2.5. Everyone's concerned. It sunsets at some particular point in time and goes away. That's why it's crucial that we have this transfer out based on our financial policies that over time takes it out, so that when it does sunset, it's not, we don't fall off a cliff.
But the bright side is they don't all sunset on, sunset on the same day, on the same year. So the cliff is more like a, like a step.
So, so I'd like to put that to bed, but the very end, I want to revisit it once to know what the three numbers are going in, okay? Item six?
Question six, what are the costs for VEDA and Softwrite, and where are these in the budget? The FY25 costs for VEDA is $49,901, and Softwrite is $37,441. These expenses in the past were paid from a line item in the Finance Department in FY25. These expenses are now part of the Information Technology Department's budget, and the list of the expenses are under the Computer Software VEDA. And I included a spreadsheet that shows you a breakout, a breakout of the entire cost that are under the Computer Software VEDA line item within the budget.
One quick question is that historically has the, is all accounting costs, whether they be VEDA, Softwrite, or all Softwrite in prior years, has that always been on the town's side of the budget? Is there another Softwrite account expense on the school side?
No, I don't know what's on the school side, I'd have to look, but from what I've seen, just looking at FY20, I've only looked at FY24 and 25, I've seen these costs, we can run a vendor active report and look and see if this vendor has been paid, has been paid by the school department.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jermaine?
Do we, do we anticipate for historical data, Softwrite, we're going to have to continue to pay? Because this is all cloud-based, so if we don't keep paying, we don't have access. If we don't have access, we don't have history. So I know there's been talk about, you know, printing reports and putting them on a PDF, and then they'll wind up in the attic in a pile on the floor that we'll never find when we want something, because this is what happens all the time. I'm really concerned that we have this much historical data that we do not have on some kind of an electronic device, on some kind of a memory stick, on some hard drive, and it's, I see it's this $37,000 of extortion because we're not using it, but we just want to access our data that we already paid for. we just want to access our data that we already paid for.
Right. And I think the idea with that is we pay for it one year. That gives us one year to print all the reports we need and store them.
Mr. Ryan?
Kind of off subject, but we should probably export it into some kind of a CSV file, so that it's, you know, usable. So, yeah, so we should just export all the data into electronically.
Put some kind of data warehouse, and we can use it every year.
Exactly. We'll just export it onto our system, and then they'll have it all in the, in an electronic form.
Then we can start paying it.
Then we can start.
I'd like to know if the 49,000, is that the entire town school included for the package? Because I know the school is still using Softrite, and they're using VEDAR. So they're using the two systems side by side. We're using just VEDAR. So how much of that 37,000 is because the school is still using VEDAR? And if it's in the IT budget, it's not above the line.
That's a good question.
Yep, good question. Mr. Mahar?
I think, just, just as a matter, I mean, the costs of these things are certainly important and significant, but at the same time, how inefficient is it to be using two separate software systems?
Incredibly.
Yeah, incredibly, incredible, and confusing, and maybe adding to our, our budgetary, you know, data issues, whatever. Now, when we, you know, I love to go back 30 years, but when we deregionalized and we had a, an integrated system, schools in the town were on the same system. I forgot even what it was called. And then what we did is, is we wanted to get into some, some newer applications, and I was on that group, where we looked at both a product called Data National, which was Joe Kaminsky's old company, and Munis, both integrated programs. And we had decided to go with Data National. And it was a, an integrated program where both the schools in the town are able to go into it, and everything is updated where it's supposed to be. And then we got away from that, because I wasn't here for, I was at, I think I was at tail end of, you know, when they, tail end of my time, when they wanted to bring Softrite in. And one of the questions, the question I had was, was it an integrated program? And I was led to believe that it was, but it wasn't. And if it, and I would have never, ever had an opinion to go with it if it was not an integrated program. And when you go with these integrated programs, what we learned before was the, was the best ones are the ones that are originally developed on the school side and then transitioned over into the town side. So the schools got much more of a, I guess, difficult time of accounting on their side than, than the town does. So, I mean, you hate to go, I don't know if VEDAR is an integrated program. Apparently, it's not, because the school doesn't use it, or uses part of it. The town, I don't know what, what it does with it. So you're talking 50 plus, those, you're talking $90,000 here for that. You could probably get an integrated program for less than that. So I'm just saying, don't overlook the, of getting another one and getting it right.
I would say that, again, that's going to be up to the Finance Director to go through and analyze the system. And is it usable? Is it not? There's a whole story behind that, so I think that's for another time, but you just need to evaluate it for its user, can we use it? Can we integrate it? Or do we look for another option?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's something that, you know, I did have some training with one of the VEDAR representatives. You know, there are some pros and cons, some of the financial reporting that I do, you know, in terms of the balance sheet, there is great. But then there are some other challenges and, you know, restrictions that make it a lot, not as user-friendly. And so there's, you know, a lot of reports you have to run and, you know, download to Excel. So there's a lot extra that I have to do instead of being in a one, one, one report. From what I'm seeing, you can get all the information, but the amount of time that it takes to get that information is very, you know, a lot of man hours. But I'll be looking into that. I'll be meeting with the representatives, I'm meeting with Softrite, looking at VEDAR, doing a comparison, and looking at, you know, as we look at, when you're asking, you know, if the school department is using VEDAR, or how they're using Softrite, we'll look at the licensing and, you know, who's on, you know, who's getting the license between this town and the school, and we can have that conversation.
Could I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair? So, Mr. Mahar, can you just tell us quickly why it's important that it be an integrated program, the software that we use?
Because the, both the school and the town would be, maybe Dan can explain it better than I do.
Can you use your mic?
The school and town, the, the school and town would both be on the same system. When the, when the school did a payroll, it would flow over to the town. That doesn't happen now. And when the town, and when
It's double up your accounting, doing it in one, two.
And it's basically, it's basically what, what, what you want, what you want to have happen is whatever the school department is doing over in their building comes over and gets into the system here. And then, and that's the integrated part of it. And that's the important part of it, because right now, that doesn't happen.
I just thought it was important for people to know.
It used to, but it doesn't anymore.
It's transparent. It makes it much easier for everybody.
And you can see it, and it's, and it's instant.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll agree. Item seven?
Item seven, how much was put into OPEB in FY '24, and what's being, and what is being put into OPEB this year? The town funded 225,000 in OPEB in FY '24, and as, and as part of FY '25 budget, we are recommending 100,000 being allocated. And currently, the balance in OPEB funds is 2,578,519,45.
Okay.
Question eight, do you have the $100,000 paydown that was supposed to come out of the solar money for the middle school project? For this, if there's any past agreement that includes $100,000 to be paid from the solar revenue, there'll be a journal entry that can be processed during the fiscal year, and that can address that. And I'll be reviewing that in detail going forward.
Mr. Ryan?
Do we know that we've been paying that each year?
I have to look into that.
Okay, so we don't know?
I don't know that, but I'll run the reports. I'll run the solar, I'll run the solar budget reports and see if any journal entries have been made.
I, I think there's two sources, and just so everyone knows, everyone knows the problem we had with building elementary school years ago. And we finally got one built, and one of the promises that we made to taxpayers, because it was going to be a debt exclusion, was that we would, we heard their concerns and questions about not using money we already received to run operations. And it was a commitment to draw $100,000 out of income, and to set aside to pay that down, which helps everyone, you know, going forward. So that's the next project when we have to. I think if you look at all of our past schedules, if you look at the, I have the 17, 18, 19, 20, 21 town meeting, it's right there, it's 100,000. It's in the debt number, I should say. So you're either going to see it in two places. One, as a payment of, of principal, or a, or something coming out of revenue. But I think that if you find it in a reduction of principal, that's where it should be. If it's not there, then I'm really concerned, but.
I'll have to look. I'll look into that, and I'll go back to the committee as I review that information. And if it's not being done, then, you know, make sure that that is being processed. And, you know, as we form these working groups through the summer, and we start reviewing things that have happened in the past, FY '24, '25, and, you know, we'll be able to make those adjustments.
Mr. Ryan?
So as part of that, what I was told, and maybe you can verify it, I'm looking at Article III from last year's warrant, and it said the total debt, the not excluded debt was 1, 1,90800. I had been told that 100,000 that was in that was part of the paydown. I can't verify that, but the previous Finance Director had mentioned to me. So what you can probably check too from the vote, is if you can look at what we, our principal and interest payment was supposed to be for, for this year that we're in now, and see if there's an extra 100,000. It was voted at a town meeting or not.
I'll have to look into, but what we have for our debt service right now, and I'll look at the numbers for FY '24, are only included in what the town has issued debt and bonded. I didn't see anything in the debt service from Hilltop regarding the 100,000.
Okay. But we may have appropriated at a town meeting. That was my point. I'm not sure.
Mr. Jermaine?
It was in the FY '22 Appendix D that we got. This is best copy. It was carried forward in, in the whole projections going forward, but it doesn't, I don't believe it ever happened. I think it happened that first year in '22, and I think the rest of it went off the window.
Okay, we should know.
Yeah, if you look into that, please.
I'll look into it.
All right.
Number nine?
Nine, do you have a copy of the local receipts history supporting the budget total? The town received, the town received 3,918,3757 in local receipts in FY '23. And the projected analysis for FY '25 local receipts was prepared by the town's consultant and included in your FY '25 budget monitor, just looking at a projection of just over years of what they, you know, they felt would be increased in local receipts. As we move forward, as I work on the budget for the next fiscal year, I'll be providing a detailed report on local receipts and sitting down with each department and looking at, you know, what their thoughts are, looking at what we're investing our money in, seeing if investment income has gone up. There's a lot of, you know, the interest rates have increased, so what the investments that we have, and it will be, you know, more of a detailed analysis.
Sorry, Mr. Ryan?
Oh, so I think what the, you know, interim Finance Director did, from what I can tell, is they took the actual receipts that we got in 2023, subtracted off what was called the miscellaneous nonrecurring revenue, which was 262,356,75. I don't know what goes into that. I'd like to know, I'm sorry, that was 316, I'll repeat that number. So 316,147,73, what was called miscellaneous nonrecurring. So they took the actual receipts from last year, because we don't have them this year yet, subtracted off what was called miscellaneous nonrecurring, but then added 262,356,75. I don't know where that number came from. So I don't know why, I can understand taking the receipts that came in, and again, taking off this nonrecurring, but we should have the same this year too, and then added that number. So it'd be kind of good to understand that, because in my opinion, I think the better thing would have been to do of look, look at each of these accounts, like for example, motor vehicle, you know, I think we received 1.8 million or so, or, so why cut that? Do we expect that to have gone down? The ones that kind of caught my, you know, thought process here were that interest has gone up a lot, because, you know, interest rates have gone up high. So if that's being cut, why are we doing that? We should be able to have a better projection of interest that we're earning out of money. We should be able to get some number. We're already this far through the year. So maybe it'd be good to understand, are we, are we actually collecting much higher interest rates? So I think it made more sense to look at each of these by themselves to see from a trend, are they potentially dropping? Are they increasing? Because I'm coming up with potential, we could use another $200,000 is what I'm estimating in the estimated receipts. I think it's very, I mean, you always have to be careful, because of, you know, we talked about the governor's budget and the cherry sheet and, and all of this coming to reality. But I, you know, if you're too conservative on it, then, you know, we're missing out probably. It'll be free cash next year, but if we're trying to balance a budget this year, I want to make sure we're using a good estimated receipt value that we all feel comfortable with.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think that's what Ms. Preval said she was going to do.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I will go through and look at a detail. I think that, you know, as you mentioned, we do need a detailed analysis to look at every single line. And I think this fiscal year, we need to be very conservative, and I've taken a very conservative approach. Just not, I just don't, I haven't been long, here long enough to really look at the FY ' '24 budget. And I want to make sure that we're not kind of jumping ahead of ourselves in FY '25, if there are things that we're going to have to adjust for FY '24.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
In a couple of meetings with the interim town, town Finance Director, I questioned, and for some reason, I, I remember seeing a $700,000 new growth number, and I asked, why are we not using that? And he said that he didn't have the supporting documents, but it looked like that was the number, but he was taking the last five years' average. So if that's the case, then, and we're looking at 414, it could actually be 200,000 more, 250,000 more, but he didn't feel comfortable using that as a revenue. Unfortunately, this, this entire revenue is going to be a projection. That's correct. We don't know what it's going to come in at. So we're doing, this is all a best guess. So I, I think that there's, because I remember seeing in like an early draft version, one to, one of those, that, you know, when he first got here, he started playing with the numbers. And that's, he was doing a lot of averaging at that point, trying to get a handle on, as he should, trying to get a handle on where he was at. And, and he did an awful lot of five-year averaging to try to get a balance and a sense as to what the trend was, what's going on with this, and so forth, and so on, so. We could be in much better shape revenue-wise than we have on this paper.
Right.
We unfortunately won't know that until June, or July 1st of 2025.
Or after that.
And is that the way it usually goes?
Yeah.
Always.
Through you, Chair, I just wanted to add to what you were saying, Mr. Jermaine, in terms of the tax levy. And as I was looking at the tax levy and, you know, DOR, we want to make sure that we're using the entire amount of the tax levy and not just a portion of it, so we're not leaving anything on the table. And I think that's something what we definitely need to look at, because I don't believe, from what I was looking at, we're using the entire amount. So I would love to sit down with whoever is interested, and we'll go through those numbers. We'll sit with the Department, we'll book DOR. I will, you know, probably put together a really detailed PowerPoint presentation that goes over the tax levy, so people can really understand everything in terms of the tax ceiling, tax levy, what it means as we're looking at our abatements, and just going through our surplus for our allowance for abatements, and looking at what revolving funds we currently have, and what additional revenue sources that the town has. I just need to be able to reconcile what's in Softrite, what should be in VEDAR, but I definitely believe that the town may have additional funds, especially through, you know, the surplus, but I just need to make sure that those surplus revenue from their allowance for abatements, people don't understand what that terms is, is, you know, for your tax levy. If people are paying taxes and they dispute it, and they feel like they shouldn't be paying private refund. But at the end of the year, if there's a balance that would be transferred into a revolving surplus account, which then could be modified town, which then could be used in the revenue source. So I think that is definitely something I'm really interested in looking at, and, you know, going back as well, we will warn the Department of Finance Committee and other members of the staff.
Sure.
We had a tremendous amount of money that was set aside in last year's budget for abatements. And we don't know what the current update to that was, whether, you know, did that really happen? We're like 800,000. Didn't we set some huge number aside for abatements last year? I know Leaderville was a quarter of a million, and there was a whole bunch more money that was set aside for abatements.
Would that be part of the overlay?
It was a overlay, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it was 250 last year, 250,000 he used for the overlay last year.
I thought there was much more.
And he's using the same this year, too.
Well, I think, doesn't it accumulate? Doesn't it grow, the overlay?
No, the assessor's basically set the number, and I think when we talked to them, they, he was comfortable with using 250,000 again as the overlay.
But it was a big number. It was a much bigger number than that. Maybe they cut it back, but it was a much bigger number.
So through you, Mr. Chair, so how happens with the allowance for abatements? The Department of Revenue legislation stating that you could use one account. In the past, people have allocated their abatements, and they have recognized by each fiscal year. So you can, they have a surplus from different fiscal years, which would then, you know, looking at the net amount, what is actually available, that you could use a revenue source, or maybe reduce the amount of your allowance for a current fiscal year, because you have a amount and a balance to cover any abatements that may come in. But those are definitely conversations that, you know, I'm looking to, and something that, you know, I'll be addressing, especially as we look at revenue sources moving forward. You know, one thing that's really important is not just, you know, you know, five-year capital plan, but a five-year, a five-year revenue plan, so that we can really address and see, you know, what are the changes, what are some of the projected changes that affect our budget? Because as I mentioned before, revenue dictates how much you can actually spend.
No argument here. All right, item 10?
Last question. That makes up the 70,000 budget in the Finance Department under other professional services. We currently have a contract, we have a contract with Inspire Low Powers and Sullivan. They produce our financial statements for the town. They produce our financial statements for the town, and expenses for this service in FY '24 was $38,000. We also have OPEB administrative fees that are being paid out of that line in the budget that come to about $500 a month. The contract I mentioned with Powers and Sullivan is entitled, we have Powers and Sullivan will expire this year, and, you know, I requested funds to cover any additional increases that we may have. If there's services outside that particular item firm, working on our CPA firm, I'll be meeting with them next week, because they were involved in the process of moving from software to data. And so that's why I had requested that amount of money in the budget to cover any unforeseen expenses in terms of items that may come up this fiscal year. And if we don't spend that, I'm definitely thinking that, you know, in the next fiscal year, that that probably will be reduced, because I will not need assistance from some of the other funds that are currently been in the process of working on that budget.
Okay. I just had one question going back to number four about the, the reduction of debt, the last, and maybe I misunderstood you. The last version we had, there was a potential to write, I guess, payoff three fire trucks, right? And, and now you're saying, are we, you talked with the consultants. Typically, I look at this is that when you've got, you know, these, these notes, that low interest, you, you let them run, and then you target the payoff date, and then what you want to do is when it drops, you want to line up your next project, and you want to make sure you've got this consistent debt level versus having debt drop, and then you bounce up, and you have the sawtooth effect. Are we saying that we're now back on paying this off over time?
So right now, and if you're in your packet, I provided a copy of the debt service that the town actually has. So there was a part authorization in 2012, it was one in 2016, 2018. These are the debt service. The consultant that was working here thought they could just, they had a suggestion to pay the debt service side for cash. And moving forward, you know, in terms of what you mentioned, we really need to look at our capital projects, you know, moving forward, because the interest rates aren't very low, and it may be extremely beneficial to the town to look at what that looks like. So as I prepared a scenario in terms of the cost, the shared cost, I'll be preparing in the debt service schedule, because we have debt that's dropping off, and it's going to be very important for the town to be able to look at the next five years of the debt service drop off, because that debt that's dropping off could be allocated to our reserves, it could be allocated to some of the items that you mentioned in this budget that aren't currently happening. And we'll be able to look at the pilot revenue that's coming up from 2003, what's happening with debt service? If the debt is dropping off, and we have a half a million dollars dropping off in the next two or three years, we need to have a plan on how we're going to allocate that savings. And so that's something for you, Mr. Chair, is something that I'll be looking into, and having a working group to really get a good analysis, because that allows the town to have really good financial stability, not now, but over the next five to 10 years, and allows us to do that planning.
Okay, so we got through the 10 questions. Oh, I think Beth has a.
Almost.
I think there's a question missing. So last night, I had asked one, one other question about the funded compensated absences that were around $99,000. You were going to look in to see if there was any type of a payroll accrual for an outstanding PTO balance, to see if we really needed the 99?
Yes, currently. So I'm just trying to think, because I have the reports here in terms of what has been exchanged.
Because I see, it looks like we dropped it from the 99,000 to tonight, down to, I think, the 25,000 again, but I'm just wondering, did we have an accrual made?
No, it didn't change.
It didn't change on the first page?
I don't believe that number changed. We, what changed was the unemployment, and we did have 51,000 in the prior year of preparation carry for that was reused. But I, I wouldn't decrease the compensated balances, because that money covers your vacation buyback in six towns when people leave and people retire, right?
It said 99,000 last night, does it still seem, because I thought this front page here says 25,000. And we were going to see if there was a payroll accrual, because I was wondering if they made an accrual every time they did payroll for the PTO balances?
So for the compensated balances, I'll have. I'll have to get back to you in terms of the compensated balances, in terms of what they have for a balance. I want to make sure that the crosswalk from software to data are providing correct information, and I don't want to provide, because I, I want to look into that, so I have the backup reports. Apologize for not having that question answered. There was another question that came up, asking what were the different stipulations that were paying out to town employees? Within your, within your packet, we have a list of all of the employees for the town, and their step levels, their hourly rate, their annual salaries, and the stipulations that we give to the board. I didn't have enough time to put that together, but I rolled this together, a list of all the stipulations, and the answer to that question that came in.
Mr. Ryan?
Question on the Old Colony. The estimate for the Old Colony payment for this year was 1,355,000 for the year we're in now. The original estimate that was projected was 1,456, but now the latest number dropped to 1.1,176, so it was a big drop. I was curious as to why that dropped so much.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have, we have a number of expenses from the Collins, we know what FY '25 actual expense is going to be in, so that's why it was updated to that correct number.
Okay, thank you.
I have it if you want it.
Eleven kids.
Enrollment.
It's the enrollment number.
We went down to 79 from 91.
I think it was.
Cool.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have the lineup from Old Colony if you.
Perfect.
Yeah, I do, too. That's, that's the big reason for it.
Great.
Okay, so we've been through our 10 questions. Do you want to get back to getting us to the split?
So.
Can I ask, Jim, are we voting on this tonight, or what?
I just want, I want to get a comfortable, I'm just, you know, what are the adjustments that we're looking at? And depending on how many there are, if people feel comfortable voting with a condition upon these adjustments, that's one thing. If people don't feel voting, like they don't feel comfortable, if they don't know the numbers, I'm not going to force anybody to, for a vote tonight.
Well, how are we going to put this thing together for Friday? That's.
That's a good question. My, my sense is there's a good chance we won't, we won't make it, put it together by Friday.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can say something. So this is a minor fix. You're going to see a wash, you're going to have the same numbers. If you wanted to take a five or 10-minute recess, I can update the numbers, and I can come back to the committee and provide you with those numbers. But I, you know, I'm pretty sure that the bottom line will stay the same. There'll be a few adjustments in terms of allocating money, but the numbers in terms of the shared cost will not change, because we're taking the overlay out and increasing the debt to the 1.5.
What, what happens if we don't do it by the third, the 30 days in advance?
30 days in advance, but we're not going to have capital done by, by then, and that's 30 days.
You don't need capital, we didn't do it last.
Capital buy loss, is that, it has to be done 30 days before town meeting.
Well, that's great. Well, we didn't do it last year, because the capital had plenty of time after.
I, I would think that with, with all the changes we've had this year, and changes in staff and software and whatnot, that I'm not, I don't want to make people vote on something just because there's this deadline.
Well, I don't disagree at all, but I, also, you're going to have a problem, I think, at town meeting with people saying they didn't have enough advance notice if we, if we wait longer than 30 days, or less than 30 days, rather. I mean, this, this honestly, this has to get done. Even if we push it off till next Monday, which is, you know, 28 days, now we got who knows what problems and complaints will get filed, and then we start on that road.
I understand.
If you were to have something ready to put to town meeting, what's, I mean, it's already printed and everything, but what's our leeway for making adjustments on the floor? If we spend the next two weeks, you know, tuning some numbers, and we have to make a motion to make an amendment to something, what's, you know, is that, is that an option?
You mean publish this?
We publish what we have today as the budget, you know, we, we keep working the numbers, and either you.
Make the floor adjustments.
You could either make floor adjustments, or worst case, you may have to go back to another town meeting later on.
You could certainly go to a special town meeting in the fall.
Fix whatever you have to fix.
I'm, I'm okay either way. I just don't, I'm not going to force anybody to vote if they're uncomfortable. But I, I don't have a problem with, if we identify these changes and we vote knowing that roughly what the effect will be, and if something does populate within the next 30 days, that we address it on the floor.
Mr. Chair, so I was just going to say that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Ms. Prevell said that there may be some slight changes, but it's not going to see more than we need, it's going to be pretty much what we see in front of us tonight. Did I have that right?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. The bottom line is going to stay the same, I'm just going to be reallocating the 250 that was an overlay, I'll be taking that and reallocating a portion, about 192,500 into the debt service. So that's, it's going to definitely be a wash, you're not going to see, you know,
so it sounds like.
Significant changes in the bottom line.
Sorry. Right. So it sounds like the bottom line's going to be the same. So that's good.
Well, if that's the case, then I would have no problem with that. None of the numbers you made tonight will change what the schools portion is?
No, the schools portion is going to stay.
So they won't have another meeting and?
Or the town?
No, through you, Mr. Chair, the school numbers will stay the same.
So, I mean, what, what else do we have for a choice?
I think.
Mr. Bahar?
If I may, I, I think the, one of, one of the overriding factors is, do, do we have a high degree of confidence that we have a balanced budget? And I think that, that's crucial, and, and I think that that's been determined. If there's some nuanced changes that come along, well, then we can, I don't know if I'd want to deal with them on the floor. Maybe, depending on, you know, how, how difficult or not they are to explain, or maybe it goes to a fall town meeting. But the overriding factor to me at, at this point is, do we have confidence that we are, that we have accurate information and that we have a balanced budget? And I would go along with that.
Yeah.
So, we're back to take us to the split? Any revised numbers?
So. Could we take, you know, if I recess, so I can just put the numbers in and then tell you if.
Sure. How long do you need?
I need five minutes.
All right, we'll take a 10-minute recess.
We have in prior year that, you know, gives us, brings us over 100, and then that allowed me to put $50,000 into the middle school construction reserve pilot, pilot, pilot fund this year with those different changes.
And the 250 was removed from the overlay?
And because we took the 250 out of the shared cost.
So it balances?
So then if you'd like to turn to your actual budget, I can show you the changes that were made in the actual budgets. So although the 250 was taken out of the shared cost, which determines the school budget, you'll see if you turn to the second page, you look on the back, you, the overlay is still in as non-appropriate other expenditures, because this is something I still have to account for as a, as a reduction from the tax, you know, from your taxes, it's just a non-appropriated other expense. And if you go to other budget transfers, you'll see that I increased the unemployment reserve to 55,600, and the middle school construction reserve pilot, I put that in, and now that's, there'll be $50,000 that will be going into that fund. And that was a lobby, because we took the $250,000 out of the shared cost with the overlay, leaving you with a balanced budget. If you go to the third page, the, the budget for the operating budget is 52,816,26, and the revenue sources are 33,446,706 from the tax levy, 13,746,61 from state aid, local receipts at 3,857,047, and free cash is at 723,400. For available funds, we have 20,000, that's coming from cemetery, and the ambulance receipts would be at 1,028,771, giving you a balanced budget for FY '25.
Can you repeat that last part, Jim? I didn't quite do that.
Oh, so can you hear me now if I'm, if I'm standing a little away from the mic?
No, I think it's going to get a little bit closer. I just missed that last sentence.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I was going over the total general fund, recommended budget is 52,816,26. This is going to be funded through the following revenue sources. One, the tax levy, which is 33,000, 33,446,707. State aid at 13,746,61. Local receipts, 3,857,047. And available funds, free cash, 723,440. Cemetery, 20,000, and the ambulance receipts of 1,028,771, providing an FY '25 balanced budget. Are there any questions? You're welcome.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
A motion to approve the budget, is everything? Oh, I've got some questions.
Okay.
First of all, does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, but this is the 30th of April.
True.
So she, Karen did exactly what she said she was going to do. She come back and, and, and made some adjustments, and the budget balances out, and I think that if we're going to nickel-dime this thing.
No, I'm not.
No, 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 I'm not saying nickel, I don't mean it literally. I think if we're going to do any, any further deep diving and get into percentages and so forth and so on, that this is not the time to do it, and certainly is not the time to do it on town meeting floor. I think that this is the budget presented, this is balanced, this should be brought to town meeting and voted on, and if there are massive changes or any, you know, oops, we found stuff, because, because, give Karen a break, she's been here for 10 seconds, then we deal with that at a possible fall town meeting. But I think that we are able now, with these numbers, and, and I think that Karen is, is very confident also that this is a balanced budget. And I don't know it's going to get much better than this.
No, but I, my question is, is, I'm not looking to go through line items, detailed percentages, anything like that. But getting back to, I said we revisit the pilot programs in the end. That's something that I, I, I still want that to be the focus on as we go forward and have our forecasts and future meetings. I'm looking at what we've been putting into the OPEB account in the past few years. 18,195,000, 19,245, got up to 345,021. That's what we're following, our, our policies. I think 225 was the last year. 100,000, this year, I just think, I don't like the direction it's going in. I think that I'd like to recommend that we increase local receipts by $100,000, because I feel that the investment income is somewhat low, as we talked about the fact that the new growth number needs to get looked at. So I would like to see 100, that increase of $100,000 to $200,000 in the OPEB funding, and the offset being an increase in local receipts.
Through you, Mr. Chair, my recommendation, I, I strongly believe, and I'm looking at all different revenue sources, we still have state aid at hand, we're using the governor's budget, it's gone to the House, there was a slight increase, it hasn't gone through all of the different levels of the state, they are still looking at different decreases. I think we need to be very conservative with our approach. I feel like if you would like to put additional money into OPEB, what we could do is, if there are any changes in state revenue, further.
in state revenue further in the year, we could then come back for additional appropriation to add to that. Or if the select board wants, we could all, we could always reduce the amount that we're putting into the debt stabilization, increase the OPEB to, we have $100,000 set aside in stabilization and $100,000 in debt stabilization fund. We came to that agreement because we wanted to be able to show the town that we're putting money aside. But if you would like to have $200,000 going into the OPEB, we can definitely decrease what's going into the debt stabilization fund. We do currently have $490,000 in the debt stabilization fund as a balance, so there is money in that fund already. So if that's something that the committee would like to do more than well, I'm more than happy to make, change that for you. But I, I would not feel comfortable increasing local receipts without having a really good, strong understanding and projection of the investments. We're still working on, through VEDAR, in getting the receipts updated. When I started, I've been working on the treasurer, making sure. I don't know what the current receipts are as a total, because we're still working on that. And I personally would not feel comfortable increasing local receipts to a higher amount without having that, without feeling confident that we're going to bring in that revenue. I would hate to, you know, another thing that you could do is, we could use all of the free cash. So as I mentioned before, we did receive, you know, $2.1 million in free cash. We're using a portion of that to fund the budget, a portion of that to fund capital projects. And if you'd like to use the balance to increase OPEB, we could do that. But I, I would prefer not to increase local receipts.
I'm fine with using a portion of free cash to increase OPEB.
Okay, let me do that calculation real quickly.
Okay.
With available free cash for capital, it will stay the same?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, while they're calculating, and pretty much everybody with the exception of Mark and Sarah were in the room last night, and Jackie, we talked about after July 1st, the necessary, what I feel is necessary going forward, that we come up with a sustainability outlook again. And it's going to obviously involve the last five years of where we are numbers-wise. And we should look at the next three, five, and 10. Because as we go forward, and I feel like a broken record sometimes, but with a three-point, with a $36 million payroll benefits package and a $33 million tax levy, the number already starts out upside down. And with cost of living and inflation and contracts, grade steps, union contracts, the levy's locked in at 2.5%. We don't know where those other numbers on the, on the payroll side of things are going to go. This could get worse. And if we're not careful, and we start, don't start really seriously looking at sustainability, we could find ourselves in the same position as a lot of the surrounding cities and towns, looking for overrides. So I think that that is an absolute requirement of a working group. And it should be, just so I can set the makeup, it should be the, one or two members of the select board, it should be one or two members of FinCon, it should be a member of capital outlay, it should be involvement with the school, it should be a couple of other committees and , and committees and boards in the town that have a huge impact. Planning should be one, because they're really the income side of things when you look at new growth. And this should be a working group. And it should be a very seriously adhered to and functioning working group, to see where we're going to be. So we don't go through this next year-
No.
And to the tune of even worse, the following year, because it's going to get worse. And that's just my personal belief.
Nope, agree. Mr. Ryan, do you have a question?
Oh, I was just going to make a statement that, yeah, if you allocate another $100,000 from free cash, you're going to bump it up to 200, but we still have the option at town meeting, if we wanted to move it back down again, you can always make that motion-
Okay.
And put it back to 100 if you thought for some reason. We probably couldn't change, I mean, if we, my question was going to be if we thought we might have a better handle on the receipts by town meeting, if we, but I'm thinking probably not. Okay.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the 2025 budget as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, issues of concern?
One question is, as far as articles and getting ready, do we, I mean, maybe this is a little bit separate, but we'll be able to have the article ready for, from this, from tonight?
We needed this done, in order to build the budget article.
To do the article. Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't you prefer to have FinCon vote on this first?
Yeah, separate votes. Sorry.
And then let the select board vote on it? Because you really have the right, you have the power to override us. We don't.
Okay.
So you might want to withdraw that motion.
Yes, I will withdraw that motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
I withdraw the second.
Okay. I guess then I'll do the same thing. I'll make a motion that-
Sorry, Jim, we need a roll call vote.
Well, we didn't, no, they, we didn't vote it.
We didn't vote.
When we do it, we need a roll call.
I make a motion that we, I'd like to see a motion that we approve the balanced budget as, as updated and presented by Karen a few minutes ago, to be included in the warrant.
Okay, so moved.
Is Karen saying something?
Yes, Karen.
Excuse me, excuse, excuse me, through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make note that by increasing OPEB by $100,000, the new general fund recommended budget is $52,916,626. And the amount that we'll be using from free cash will be $823,440, leaving a balanced budget at $52,916,626. So everything has gone up by 100,000.
Can you say that one more time?
Sure. And I can print another report, but I know you're not going to take a break right now. So we increased OPEB to 200,000. And so the general fund recommended budget now goes from $82,816,626 to $82,916.
52.
52 or 80?
52 million.
52 million. Did I say 92? Oh, my-
You said 82.
That was a slip of the tongue. 52 million. That would be a nice one, isn't it? 916, 626.
Okay.
And the free cash under available funds will now go from $723,440 to $823,440, with a balanced budget at $52,916,626. And with this budget, we still will have funds to fund the capital projects at $1,0210.
So, yeah, why are we stuck at the $1,0210 for capital? So we do, the capital sheet doesn't say how much we're allowed to spend. You're just telling us no.
No, so we met with all the departments, and we went through what the available funds are. There are conditions in the FY '24 budget that have to be addressed. And so in the past, you've used available funds from existing balances, but there are concerns that have to be, there's just some, there, there's some, I would say, there's some housekeeping that has to be done on the capital projects. And we met with all the departments, we met with police, fire, O&M, and they all agreed on the $1.2 million. We need to be conservative in terms of how we're funding capital until we're, until we're able to reconcile and see what available balances we currently have, and address some of the concerns that have come up with the FY '24 budget. So this was not a number that was dictated to anybody. This was a number that the cap, that the departments came up with. And Elaine, if you wanted to elaborate on that, you know, in terms of the capital committee.
So through you?
Yes.
It feels very dictated. We have had a few meetings where we've met with everyone, but we haven't been given the option to, you know, to vet anything out. It was just, you have this amount, these are the projects, that was it. So, you know, I'm not sure why we have a capital committee.
Yeah, that you've taken, we've essentially taken out the role of the capital committee because we sit down with these, with the audited funds, and we sit down and we listen to the managers, their issues, their concerns, and we make recommendations. It sound like, it sounds like that's been taken out of the equation, unless we decide that we see a particular project that we think is not as important and want to move it someplace else, but really the work's been done.
So, in-
So what you have in front of you is the recommendation. This is absolutely not dictated. This goes before the capital committee for you guys to vote. You can vet it, you can have the departments in and vet it out yourselves. But that is the budget that we have for capital?
And one thing, when we met with the departments, because for the capital projects, the original rec, the original request was, you know, well over around $3 million, I believe, for the request. And, you know, as I mentioned before, we can only fund what revenue we currently have. And based off of being able to first balance the budget, we looked at what was remaining in free cash to fund any additional projects for the capital project. So as we met with the department, I had to tell them, look, based off of, have, based off of the revenue that we bring in for the town, and, and what we needed to balance the budget, the balance that we had left over-
So let's just say we decide that, yeah, we want that latter truck, but do we just cut the rest out?
Yep.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
To the capital outlay committee.
That's correct. And everything, the dollar amount is based off of what we have for revenue, because we, as I mentioned last night, as I was going through the FY '24 budget, there's one article that allocated funds for projects that were currently spent. And so I, we couldn't use any available balance of capital funds, because I need to address that issue for FY '24. And so I had to be very conservative in terms of what revenue the town actually has to fund capital projects. If after I've done a reconciliation to figure out how we're going to address, you know, some of the challenges for the FY '24 capital projects, we can always come back to the committee to reallocate additional funds if there are, if there are more funds.
So just through you, one more thing.
Sure.
So the last time we got the funding sheet, we had $1,006,166. And now it's just $1,002,01. So we have no explanation as of now for the capital outlay. We're planning to meet Monday, if you can come. But we'll be, what we want to know is where that $400,000 went.
We can address that. All of the reductions in terms of all of the projects that were being recommended were vetted through a collaborative effort with the department. So I definitely think that we can have a conversation about that. But if the 1.6, there's no money for 1.6. And so we, I could only provide the amount of money that we could use to fund projects. And then it was up to the departments and, you know, meeting with the assistant town administrator on what projects they would like to choose, based off of the money, amount of money we actually had available.
I, I think we're saying the same thing. The question, but the issue is, yes, you would dictate what money can be used for capital outlay. And we do all the, I want capital outlay. We would do all the work to meet with departments and listen to their stories, and then decide on, you know, which one, it would still be at the 1.2 million, because that's what you told us.
That's correct.
But it's, it just seems like that hole was taken out because of this collaborative meeting that went, took out the function of capital outlay, sitting down with people and trying to prioritize things.
So, yeah, and through you, I just want to make sure. So when we meet Monday, if we decide that we want to go back with what was on here before, but just stay within the $1,002,000, that's okay?
Oh, that's absolutely. I don't have any control of the projects that you decide. I don't make that decision at all. I only tell, I only provide what money we have available, and then you'll make the decision on what projects you want to do.
Okay. So we're back to the finance committee making their-
Yeah, I think we had a motion on the floor. I'm not sure if that was seconded. So why don't we just do this again? I'll make a motion, I'd like to see a motion that we approve the balanced budget with the revised numbers of $52,916,626 on both sides, to be published in the current warrant, warrant for 2024.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
I like it. When Beth doesn't second, Beth is not happy. There's a motion and a second, so let's have some discussion. Beth, why?
Just feel like you, there's a lot of unknowns this year, that's all. A lot of things that didn't come to us throughout the whole budget process.
Oh, I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, I, this entire committee felt like a bunch of mushrooms this year.
And just to reiterate, a lot of people put a lot of work into this, and it didn't go quite as planned. And speaking from a prior finance committee member, it seems like everything comes to the end. And then people are just rearranging their schedules, meeting four times a week. And it's not just one year. It's year after year after year. Not the responsibility of two of you. You came in and you did an incredible job, taking off from the TA that left, and you coming in and learning what you've learned in a short amount of time. I'm not sure if anybody else could have got us here, but you two obviously putting all these numbers together. I'm just saying that I can go back 10 years, saying that it's always coming down to the last minute. And so the request that I would have at least this year as chair, is that we plan. People can take vacations. People don't have to be sitting here meeting three times a week. We can make these decisions early. Somebody said we have to wait for state aid back in April. What state aid changed between now, between then and now? We can make these decisions earlier. We can make them on our own schedule, so that we're not rushing to the end.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to address what you're saying. You know, in my 23 years worth of working in a municipality doing budgets, they'll be presenting a budget calendar. That budget calendar will come on in the summer, and it will show when all of the different reports that have to be submitted to the Department of Revenue. It will have, it will have a report in terms of when we have to have our balance sheets done, and when we're going to be reviewing the budgets. There's a lot of information. This is not the norm. Usually, we start doing capital planning in June. It's not something that happens in April. We start looking at the five-year operating budget. Once we close the budget, the season for a finance director, it kind of, it begins again in July, and then it's reviewed in August. And then the head of the auditor begins also in July, because we're closing out the books. So I can just definitely assure you, a lot of these meetings and discussions will be happening between the summer and the fall. And so that when January comes, all of the committee members will have a copy of where we are, just in revenue for the first half of the year, where we are in expenses for the first half of the year, and we already have set up a schedule to meet with departments to go over their budgets. All of the salary projections will already be presented and calculated with, you know, between the HR office and my office, that will be going to the departments. It will not be the responsibility of the departments to provide the town. And I don't know that has been done in the past, but, you know, we'll be taking a very proactive approach in making sure that we have the information, it's presented to you in a timely manner, so that you can review it. I completely understand. And as I have mentioned, you need a, and, you know, with the finance committee, we need a second set of eyes, a third set of eyes, and make sure that every stakeholder that's part of this process, whether it be for capital, the CPA committee, the CPC committee, that everyone understands, and what we're putting forward is transparent. So I just want to assure you that that's something that I'll be working on. And, you know, I totally, I understand completely your frustrations. I feel like this is not the norm. And, you know, we tried to do the best to try to present additional information to you that hadn't been provided, to build confidence that, you know, what I'm going to be doing as a finance director is going to be beneficial for the town.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did that help you? Is there any further discussion on the motion with the finance committee? Hearing none. All those in favor of recommending this to go forward on the warrant?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
One.
Okay. Carrie's?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the balanced budget as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any issues, questions, or concerns from members of the select board? Hearing none. I believe we need a roll call vote.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Jim Moplin says aye.
I guess motion passed.
So just for clarification, Nancy, that's 5-1-0 for FinCon?
And 5-0. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes just to, again, thank the tribe for being able to- being able to put this budget together, coming down to the wire. No one wanted another extension, but, you know, it gets to the point where you got to feel comfortable with the numbers. Finance Committee, Capital Outlay Committee, wanted to thank you all because I've seen your meetings where you're trying to, in the early stages of the budget, trying to look at a department in a vacuum. And it just doesn't work that way, you know? I, I'm committed, and I think we're committed, to putting together a package that when you see it, it will be a balanced budget, looking to review and make changes and recommendations. No more piecemeal anymore. I just would like to, as we go forward, I've been listening to a bunch of these meetings and there's three words I'd like to call our mission statement going forward for the next budget cycle. One, I'm going to steal from Alan, sustainability, something we have to have. There's no more short-term, no more getting to the next year. We need to be looking at three, five years down the road. We can't be sacrificing the future by trying to squeeze every nickel out and penny in getting to the next year. Pat Mahar used a word the other night, consistency. I think that's something that we have to have on these financial statements. We can't have items below the line, above the line, here allocated all over the place. It doesn't give any confidence in the financials, at least from my perspective. I don't know how you all feel. The third item came from our new finance director, impact. In a lot of her statements, she mentioned the impact that these changes, the changes that we're going to recommend going down this road in the future to taxpayers, the services that we provide. So I think those three key words are something that we should keep in mind as we go forward and we try to build a better financial reporting process. But again, I'd like to thank everyone involved, your time, your commitment to the community. And I think you all deserve an applause. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Jim.
I guess I got to piggyback exactly what you just said. This may very well be my last finance committee meeting as chair, so I might as well get it all in now. I can't thank Elaine and Karen enough. We were completely in the dark. There was, we were getting bits and pieces of information. I was getting no updates. The committee was asking me what's going on. I was in constant contact, but I was getting told, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're not sure yet, things are looking good. But I, you know, things were looking good, but I didn't know why they were looking good. I think that John suffered the same frustration, I know that Dan did also. But when Elaine and Karen came on board, I really think that Elaine took it straight to heart and started working extremely hard right from the get-go. And the moment Karen walked through the door, we didn't let her take her coat off or put her coffee down on the table. We, right under the bus, she went and fixed this. And she's done an incredible job for, she said to me, I think it was the first week, it was the first day of the second week you were here, she says, I feel like I've been here for five months. And she'd been here for about a week and two days. So hats off to the two of you, you've done a great job. I don't think we could have gotten where we are right now tonight without the hard work that both of you did. And I say that with all sincerity.
Through you, Mr. Chair, could I say something?
Sure.
I just want to say that it is not me putting this together. I had so much help. And one thing that I, you know, I've been here, it's going on week five, the collaboration between the department heads, I wouldn't have been able to put this budget together if the department heads didn't come to me, provide me with, you know, background information. There's members on the committee here that sat down with me, explained to me things that have happened in the past. Laura, I have to say Laura Welch, she's...
Oh, sorry. Laura Pateen?
Laura Pateen, excuse me, I'm bad with names. But Laura Pateen, she's assistant auditor here and she has been instrumental in providing me with every single report, sitting with me. George was very helpful in coming in and meeting with me. So I just want to say that it's not me, it's a collaboration between the department heads coming and working with me and my staff really helping me get up to speed in a short period of time. So I can't take Friday for all of this. And then Elaine, I mean, the number of hours that we sat down and went through this and all her staff putting these, putting these packets together, it's something that was very, very passionate about and making sure that you had. I think they deserve applause for the amount of time and the work that they have put into putting these things together and Nancy as well. I'm probably missing people's names, but I just wanted to thank everybody for their patience and support.
No, thank you for those comments. Again, our department heads work well together and I forgot how involved they are in the whole budgetary process, so thank you for bringing that up. All right, finance committee?
Can I ask a question? When are we going to see a copy? We had a draft copy of the warrant that was, you know, hardly really a warrant. When are we going to see a warrant?
So now that we have the budget numbers, we can start building out the finance articles.
Okay.
So hopefully within a week.
So typically, I mean, I think that I'll have a finance committee meeting probably next week as well so we can reorganize the board. And then it'll be up to that chair. But typically, there's a meeting prior to the town meeting. And that's usually 15, 20 minutes, half hour, and we go through the warrant articles that we didn't have a chance to discuss. So we can at least discuss them and then vote on them. So at town meeting, somebody from FinCom will sit back and say, you know, FinCom voted five zero, four zero, however it works out.
Nope, I agree.
So from a process point of view, what's happening on Friday now and then, so what do we have to have done by Friday and how's that going to happen?
I'm not sure what we have to do.
Well, the budget needs to be published.
Okay.
So that warrant, that budget portion of the warrant will need to be posted, correct?
So the budget gets posted, the warrant does not.
Right.
The warrant article's written out in a different way. We have to build a warrant article, but now the, this budget...
But the budget will get posted.
Budget will get posted, yes.
So we'll meet our deadline?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is something similar. I don't know if it'll look exactly like this, but something similar to what you all voted on, it'll look very similar to this.
Long as it's posted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Hewens?
I just wanted to real quickly thank everyone in this room too for all the work everybody's done, committees, everybody. Thank you.
It certainly is a group effort.
Yeah.
So congratulations to Mark and Sarah on their reelection.
Thank you.
It was, they did a good job. Congratulations to John Carter as chair. Nice to see Jim Hoffman again as the vice chair. And as you know, I was successful in becoming your town moderator, so town meeting should be a real hoot. I would bring popcorn. Popcorn. You may have to get a big machine.
So I think we're all set? Finance Committee, do you like to?
Yes. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn the FinCom.
Second.
Motion made and second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye, out. We're out. Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Thank you all so much. Good night.
Don't forget Jim.
Jim, where are you, Jim?
Boy, Jim.
Don't forget Jim.
I wanted to end this off.
We should have moved the monitor right to the table there, so he's just sitting right there.
Jim, you should have voted no.
All right, good night.
Good night.